Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 17th, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the minutes. We've got a long agenda tonight. 7:00 citizens input. 7:05, we're going to have a COVID-19 update by Phil Keegan. 7:10, public hearing, New England Revolution confirmatory vote. 7:15, public hearing, earth removal confirmatory vote. 7:20, Foxborough Historic Commission appointment. 7:25, Conservation Commission land donation. 7:35, sale of bond insurance for Borough School and Water Department. 7:45, CIP review of recommendations. 8:05, review of the 2020 town meeting warrant and FY 2011 budget. 8:15, review and possible adoption of the remote meeting policy.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to move the whole on that because we don't need it at this time.
Okay. 8:25, Board of Selectmen declaration of local state of emergency. 8:35, Board of Selectmen discussion and possible vote on temporary side letters of agreement between town and unions during this state of emergency. 8:45, Town Manager's update. 8:55, Assistant Town Manager's update. I got them reversed. 9:05, Selectmen update, and then we have a lot of action items. Chris, you want to lead us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris. Seeing no one here for citizens input, we'll do a COVID-19 update. Bill?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just to lead us off, there are a lot of things that have been moving, going on in the past several weeks, in the past, particularly in this past several days, going on in Foxborough as well as in the state, across the country, and around the world. So we're doing everything we can locally, and we're going to try and couch the information that we're providing to people, particularly as it's going on here in Foxborough, because there are lots of, there's lots of information in websites and sites that you can go to, and of course, all the local news channels and the national news channels that are providing enough information on COVID-19 so that we, so everyone is fully informed on the issues. And I don't want to repeat what's already been stated on multiple formats. So we're going to try and keep it as local as we possible for Foxborough and just talk a little bit about that. As of today, Massachusetts has 218 cases of COVID-19. Currently, Foxborough has one potential COVID case being monitored at home for the 14-day self-isolation, which is close to completion. My understanding that that's actually going to be completed as of, I think, as of tomorrow. So, and no, the person's not expressing any kind of symptoms, so that is good news in that regard. Since January 1st, Foxborough has seen 29 confirmed influenza cases, which are being reported by the Department of Public Health on a daily basis. If residents do feel ill, consider recent travel and/or contacts. People are being asked to stay at home and to call their doctors. The symptoms are fever associated with cough, shortness of breath, body aches, and chills. If you are concerned, you may have had contact with someone known to have tested positive for COVID-19. Contact your healthcare provider first. Most people that do not have the serious illness should stay home to prevent exposure to others. If you are experiencing a medical emergency, please call 911. The goal of limiting gatherings to 10 individuals and prohibiting on-premises consumption of food or drink at bars and restaurants began on March 17th earlier today and is effective through April 6th. It is to create a space to slow the spread of COVID-19 by asking people to stay home. We should anticipate extended periods of social distancing even beyond that period of time. Elementary and secondary schools have been suspended from March 17th through April 16th. Actually, April 6th, actually, we closed schools here on April, on March 16th, and we, the plan was that we would close school for two weeks, and then as of the governor's announcement on Sunday, he made it three weeks, so therefore, we are not returning to school until April 6th at this time. Residents can call 211, which is an important number to keep in mind, because for DPH, it supplies, it's the Department of Public Health that provides the latest COVID-19 answers. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Mass Department of Public Health publicly update information daily and should be referred to for accurate information. Mass211 is listed as www.mass211.org, or you can do call2talk@call2talk, or dial 211-24/7 for some information and referrals to local resources, including public questions on COVID-19, multilingual, confidential, and it is multilingual and confidential and free. The Massachusetts COVID webpage is mass.gov/covid19. Finally, the Fire Department has been working alongside with the Health Department and Council on Aging Human Services to attend to the needs of those of our community who are potentially at greater risk. Remind you to practice good hygiene by washing hands and high-touch, and be mindful of high-touch services, and continue to practice social distancing throughout the day. One, and we also received, and this update was from Tom Kenbin, who was the department, who was the town's director of paramedicine, and has been keeping, giving us up-to-dates, daily updates on what the status is here in Foxborough. As he pointed out, there are no active cases here in the town that we know of. One thing to keep in mind is the fact that now that testing is going to become more prevalent and more available, that we may see a spike in the number of cases throughout the world, throughout the region, throughout the U.S., particularly as the information becomes more fluid and more available to us. So we need to be mindful of the fact that that, that it may be prevalent in anywhere we go these days, but we're not, we're not seeing it based upon actual cases because we're not doing as much testing, though that will change in the weeks to come. The Board of Health has been working closely with all the food establishments. As most people know, many of the food establishments are closed now, open only to takeout service. So there were, there was no local, there were no local bars open. Alcohol is not being served at any establishments. It is only, there's only food, and food takeout only at this time. There is a direction that the Board, the Board of Health can provide to restaurant owners who have food, which many of them probably do have on hand, that they have stored in preparation for the week, only to find out that they are actually being closed by the state government and have ordered those establishments not to serve. So we are, we can provide some assistance in that in terms of guidance as to how that goes. We will not provide financial assistance, of course, but we will certainly provide some guidance as to how to, how to use that food or in storage capacity, that type of thing. One thing that I found that the Department is actually extremely helpful with is providing guidance on any kind of situation relating to food and food safety. So if that is a question in anybody's mind, please certainly contact the Board of Health and they can help you with that. We are going to, on the local level, earlier today, I issued another update for the community that was posted on our website. I also provided an update for all the board members and to our department heads as to what we are doing here locally. I think I've already noted that school has been closed. We've also closed Town Hall, but Town Hall is available for phone calls. If people want to make an appointment, we will screen you before you come in. What we are doing tend to have limited contact with the outside public, given the circumstances that we are currently in. We expect that will change at some point, but we are taking all the precautionary steps we can, and we are looking at ways in which we may even reduce or address the staffing needs in a way that helps rotate staff so people can have less contact amongst their coworkers in the workplace itself. So we're looking at all those ways in which we want to maintain a presence in the community, maintain our services to the greatest extent possible, but by the same token, we're also being mindful and careful with our employees, because if we run into a situation where an individual becomes sick, it can really be, it can really shut down an entire section of the building, or maybe even the entire building if it becomes too serious. So we're trying to maintain services on a safe and consistent basis, and also being mindful of the public and particularly mindful of our employees at the same time. I've been in contact with all the department heads on a daily basis. We're continuing to talk. We're trying to limit the number of meetings that we're having, obviously, because we also want to limit the name of direct contact we're having with folks. I want, I want to just say that everybody here has been very cooperative, has done a great job of providing information to us when we need it. We're going to continue to reach out and work with certainly the elderly population of the community, because they're the ones that are most susceptible to this illness, and we want to be mindful of the fact that those folks are also the most, have the most challenges ahead of them because of not being in contact with residents and the neighbors and friends alike. That can actually create a situation of isolation, which we're trying to avoid at all costs. We want to try and keep people socially connected some way, shape, or form, even if it's through either a telephone call or through, or through some form of social media or electronic media. So we're going to continue to work on that and find out ways we can do that and connect with people. The other challenge is that we don't have any recreation programs open right now, but we, I've asked if they would try and look at ways we can do online programs, maybe do some taping of individuals exercising, or games, or things that they can do with kids, because we know the kids at home are getting a little stir-crazy after a while, not being able to do things what they normally do with their friends in the neighborhoods, et cetera. So we want to be mindful of all those challenges that we're facing. And then, the second thing is that what we're going to try and do is, I am going to do a television show tomorrow with local cable to try and talk about some of the things that we're, we're working on as well, and just to remind folks of things that we can do to help each other. Also, we're going to talk on, I'm going to try and do on a daily basis, I'm going to try and do a Facebook Live broadcast on a daily basis, trying to update folks on what's happening here in Foxborough. It may only be for a few minutes, but it's just to give folks an update of what's happening locally, so they can have the latest information about what's going on here in Foxborough, which I think people are really interested at this time. We're getting information daily. The governor is taking action on a regular basis. He's freeing up, freeing up our ability to meet, we're now meeting virtually with a member of the board tonight, which is great, because, you know, we haven't done that up until now. We now have that ability to do that with very few limitations, as long as we obviously stay in, consistent with open meeting law and provide minutes, et cetera. We still, we still have that ability to do that. The second thing is that the governor has also been, and some of my colleagues have been talking with the legislature about ways we can, we're going to be impacted over the next several months. Such situations involving the elections, town meeting, the budget, that get, that will be, that could potentially be delayed or approved in light of what's happening right now. And so we're looking at all those things. The governor is actually filing a bill that is up for consideration right now, which will provide emergency relief on all those things. My understanding is that, in talking with the town clerk earlier today, that he has indicated that there is, that there was an extension of the local election capability that will be brought out to the end of May, as opposed to the early part of May, which is where our local election is being held. So we could go all the way to the end of May at this point. That may get extended even further, depending upon the situation as it continues to evolve. So those are the most highlighted versions of some of the things that we're paying close attention to. It's been extremely busy. There's a lot of stuff going on, as you might expect, and we're doing everything we can to try and keep everyone informed. So, Chris?
Couple of questions. I saw the smile on David's face when he said the elections would be...
That means you get to stay in office a few more months, Dave.
You had mentioned appointment only at Town Hall.
Yes.
So, one comment on that. I think it needs to be, it is on our town website, but I think it needs to be more prevalent on our town website.
Okay.
You have to like, search for that update, so I think that needs to be, first and foremost, you know, whether it's one of those slider banners or a statement in bold that says, click here for Town Hall.
Yeah, we are not closed. I mean, I want everybody to know that.
But I had to, I had to search
Okay.
two different things to see where it was.
Okay.
The second thing, you mentioned appointment only and a screening process, so what is the screening process?
So the screening process is a series of questions that people will be asked before they can actually come in the building. Common sense questions such as, have you had any kind of illness in the past, in the past week, or the past few days? Are you, are you expressing a temperature? Are you, are you, have you had any cough, any symptoms? Has anybody in your family been sick? Those kinds of things that, that would potentially, you know, result in a, in a possible infection of others around people here in the building.
Okay. So you're doing that like if Chris Mitchell calls and says, I want to come in and Exactly right. pay my, for my dog license or whatever?
Exactly right. Virtually everyone that comes in the building is getting that same level of question. Otherwise, we're not letting you in for obvious reasons, and we're taking particular care to respect the health of everybody in the building.
Respiratory.
You got more?
Yeah, who's asking the questions? Is this, is it the person that's volunteering out front, or?
No, actually, we've asked the senior greeter, who's normally out there, not to come in, because they're all seniors and we don't want to expose those. So the people asking the question are whoever's answering the phone, you know, for that particular department.
Okay. So they're being screened on the phone call, not necessarily at the front door?
Exactly right. And also, we're doing the same, and I just made this recommendation today to the folks who are trying to get inspections of buildings and projects. There isn't a lot, a lot of stuff has been scaled back, but we're actually in the same questions before we, before we actually book an inspection for someone, particularly if it's in someone's house, for any kind of improvement, et cetera, for electrical plumbing. We want to make sure that our inspectors are not walking into a situation that could, that could potentially expose them to any kind of illness.
Have you gone to, in Town Hall or any of the buildings, a reduced staffing yet?
We haven't as of yet. What we've done is we've limited contact from various offices and places. We have done some, some rotation of staff, so that some people will work from home one day and then rotate back to the office the next day, and they'll rotate that way. And we're going to look at more of that.
That was the second part of my question, like, what is the, the, I guess, Town Hall staff or any of the other buildings, what is the capabilities of people to work from home?
Well, we, we're exploring that right now, but there are, there are some limitations to that, because a lot of people have sort of limited, limited capabilities, they're more focused on a specific function per person, so it kind of limits our ability to really do that. So, but there are a number of areas which, of course, are less significant or less operationally as necessary this time, given what we're dealing with, so we can look at those and maybe a little bit, be a little bit more flexible with those staff members. But our goal is to try and limit the number of people in each office on a regular basis so that we can limit the amount of exposure.
Bill, can I suggest that instead of asking the questions, you put the questions on paper, and you have them take a survey, sign it, and date it, so if they do, you create a baseline, so if somebody does come in and they, down the road, test positive, at least you'll have a, some sort of track, piece of paper that'll track them, and you can figure out who they interacted within, within Town Hall.
Yep.
And that's, that's what we adopted
Okay.
in the nursing home industry. People come to the building, they have to follow the survey, they have to take a temperature.
That's a great, that's a great thought.
Obviously, but it was recommended by DPH to create that baseline, so, you know, as this thing spreads, we can, we can track.
We seem to track where people are. That's a really good thought. And we're welcome to any thoughts that people may have, but we're, we're not trying to inconvenience anyone, but we are trying to be protective of everyone who's involved with local government these days. And so we're, because at the end of the day, if everybody in the building gets sick, we're not going to be able to provide the services that people want. So I hope that people will become patient and understanding of that. Occasionally, people for the most part have been. There's a few folks that have been less patient with us, but that's going to happen from time to time, and even if we're all healthy, that happens. So, so it just, but we, we've learned to deal with that.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions?
Can I ask one question, Doc? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Obviously, we didn't really talk about trying to get people not to come in, so if someone calls about their dog license, you know, is our first step telling them to mail it, or the alternative steps? You know, so that we're really limiting who's in Town Hall. It shouldn't just be everyone that, that calls and needs to pay their water bill, or, you know, do whatever.
Right.
Well, I think, I think part of the notice is, and if you can just slide it through the mailbox and
Right.
Like, wasn't that part of the?
That's exactly right. So, so we have different ways you can transact business. One is through, is to slide things through the mail slot. You can do things, some things online, paying certain bills can be paid online, and you can also call, and we can answer questions over the phone. If in fact, we need to do something that requires an in-person exchange, then we will make an appointment and do the screening process, and then allow you to come in, and we'll try and limit the amount of contact with the person as we transact the business.
And so that's not just specific to Town Hall, so the 70 Elm Street where the DPW is, that's locked. So, so they're encouraging the same thing. You know, if you've got questions, call. If you've got, you know, bill things, call, you know, do your business that way so that we can keep that workforce healthy. Similar with Council on Aging. You know, they're doing what they can with the doors locked, but the employees are still working. Same with the library. So they're working on encouraging people to use some of their online resources and programming, and they're working on checking out books, but not checking them back in, you know, during this, and also waiving any, you know, book fees, so that people can still get stuff without having the employees contact, you know, people coming in, so we can keep them as healthy as possible.
Thank you. Did you have a question, Ed?
Nope.
Okay.
I did have actually another question. I saw from one of the updates Monday, so yesterday, the emergency management team met in this room, I believe.
Yes.
So what is, what are they doing? Like, you know, I've had a couple of people reach out saying, hey, you know, I'm ready to volunteer if you guys need volunteers for stuff. So like, what is the emergency management team doing for this crisis? I know it's, it changes every, every hour almost, so any guidance on?
Well, right now, this is not something that requires a lot of assistance per se, because we're, we're, most people, it's not like we're out of power, or if we, if we don't have food, if we don't have
We don't need a shelter.
We don't need a shelter, anything like that. So this is kind of a unique situation. This is more of a case of managing the situation as best we can, and that's what that team is working on. And what is the best way we can continue to provide services to the public in a way that's safe for both the public as well as the, the staff members? We are certainly listening very carefully to what's going to, as this thing starts to progress, and particularly as the issue of vaccines, or tests, or any one of those things becomes more available to us all, we'll be looking at ways which, which is the best way to deploy that throughout the community, and those are things that we're, haven't had, haven't had the ability to discuss yet, because we don't have them too available to us. But we will, we do expect to be getting them shortly.
Thank you. Public hearing, New England Revolution confirmatory vote.
So let me just explain both, the next two items for you. So we just, we discovered that in both these items, that there was a clerical misstep along the way, which we had posted them all correctly with the exception of one place, and so we needed to, we just wanted, and we've since corrected that, and we, and they've been posted for two weeks, and we've corrected the posting requirement. So at this point, all the steps were taken. The way to correct these things is to then have another vote that confirms the action taken, especially after, after the posting steps have been taken. So, so this is simply the case.
So we don't have to reread the public notice, just reread the
Just read the, so if, unless there was somebody here that was here to, for any one of those items, or had inquired about it, which nobody really has, we just, we just wanted to, there was a question about whether or why it was on the agenda again, we've answered that question. It was just, it was a clerical misstep along the way, but obviously, it was just
Where wasn't it posted?
It was, it was supposed to be, we didn't realize it had to be posted in the clerk's office. So, and it's, it's actually listed in the bylaws as something, but we posted it in the newspaper, we posted it online, we posted everywhere, so people, the public knew about it, it wasn't any, but it was just a step that we, that is actually listed we had to do.
And whose, is it up to somebody on your team to do it, or up to the clerk to do
It's a member of our team to do that, to post it. So, but it was, when it was brought to our attention, they said, what's the way to correct it? And this is the way it's been explained to us.
Okay.
Make a motion to confirm vote taken on March 3rd, 2020, to approve the Craft Soccer LLC applications for the 2020 New England Revolution Home Games, including potential home games, as well as international matched and double headers that include the Revolution. Second. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? And remotely?
Yeah, she said yes. Same thing with number two, with the next one.
Motion to confirm the vote taken on March 3rd, 2020, to approve the River Ridge Holdings LLC application for an earth removal permit to be exercised at East Belcher Road, Foxborough, Mass, under the conditions set forth by the Board of Selectmen. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. So, and we apologize for that. It was, we, you know, obviously, we've got some new folks that we're working with, and we missed, we missed a step along the way, so we apologize for that, but we, this is the correct way to fixing that, so thank you.
Foxborough Historic Commission appointment? So
We had them out here tonight, just out of safety sake, but we do have a letter from Mark Forensic in order to just read his recommendation and
Okay.
if there's any questions.
Yeah, I'll read it into the record, and then we'll take a vote. A member of the Board of Selectmen, the Foxborough Historical Commission is pleased to propose a unanimous recommendation for a new associate member. Maureen Kraus has expressed much interest in joining the commission. She is a member of the Design Review Board and should provide us with some valuable synergy. She and her husband, Thomas, won the 2010 Restoration Award from the Foxborough Historic Commission for their work at their house on 9 Baker Street. The commission is eagerly looking forward to having her join the group. Respectfully submitted, Mark Forensic. Put that in, and we'll Motion Motion to appoint Maureen Kraus to the Foxborough Historical Commission for a term to expire on May 1st, 2020. Second. So for discussion, so it's to fill out a term and then she'll, because we're only talking three months there. Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah. Clarifying, if we're looking at extending the elections, this only goes through 5-1, so should we make a motion to change that to whenever the next town election is, or?
The only appointment.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be covered by whatever legislative action. It'll automatically extend the, the period
Okay.
until the next election. All right.
Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Lee, can you hear us? She's pointing to her ear.
I lost sound.
All right.
I wonder if the laptop went on screen saver?
I don't know. Did you hear any of this past discussion?
Now you're back.
Did you hear any of this past discussion?
Right, as soon as you guys voted, it went out.
Okay. So we're voting on the Historic Commission.
Okay.
So I'll just take a revote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good check there, Doc.
Yeah. Didn't see her hand go up. All right, so acceptance of land donation, the Durham Park Subdivision Parcell A, Coacasset Street, and Montgomery Way.
So Jane Pearce is here, our conservation agent, and she's going to just speak to you. And she's plenty distance away, so keep me a good safe distance.
Hi.
Hi. I didn't expect that I would speak. I expected that I would answer any questions, so if you'd like me to speak, I'll
Well, just tell us
Yeah, just explain, there's so many documents
Yeah, there was a lot of, just give us
Walk us through it all.
A minute, update and
This is from the subdivision that is Durham Park. It's off of Coacasset Street, it's Montgomery Way, and it's the open space that was part of the open space residential OSRD subdivision. It was supposed to have been transferred about 10 years ago, I think, when, before the first building permit. That wasn't done. So now, the owner of the property wants to get it through, so he doesn't, you know, so it's, it's all buttoned up, and his attorney's been going back and forth with us, and Kate Conley's reviewed the deed, and approves it as to substance, and the commission voted, and I don't have the date, because I didn't know I was going to talk. They voted a couple of hearings, a couple of meetings ago. They voted a couple of hearings, a couple of meetings ago to accept the land pending Kate Conley's review and approval, which she did. So during their last meeting, they signed the last sheet, which he would also be signing. I think it's the acceptance form. We've gone on a site visit. It looks lovely. It's attached to a lot of the other land that we have along Oak Street, Murray's Brook. And it's a really nice addition to the, to the conservation land in that area.
Any questions?
Do we know why 10 years ago, was it just overlooked?
I have no idea, I wasn't here, thank goodness. It must have been overlooked, I don't know.
No.
I probably shouldn't even have brought it up. It was never done. We've always known that it was coming someday. And when we looked at the, it says, before the first building permit, oh well. It was before my time, so.
Okay.
Was the, was the land donation part of the subdivision approval?
I believe so. That was the open space portion, which was going to be deeded over to the town to, through the, you know, management of the Conservation Commission.
Okay, accept the motion?
A motion to accept a land donation of Parcel A on Coacassett Street and Montgomery Way in Foxborough, otherwise known as a portion of land located in the Durham Park subdivision.
Second. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you, Leah. All right, thank you.
Great, so I'll go home.
You're good. Yeah, you're done. Do you need the signatures for that or?
Uh, well, they will need to sign it.
We'll sign it, we'll sign it later on.
Yeah.
I have never gone through this process before.
We'll sign them and get them to you.
You did a good job, James.
Oh, good.
Thanks, thanks, Jane.
All right. Sale of the bond issuances for the Borough School and Water Department.
Okay. So you have before you, Mr. Chairman, the language in Georgia's here as well. This is the sale of the actual bonds that occurred.
Tuesday.
On Tuesday, yeah, thank you, of this past week. Where the, the amounts were pretty significantly low. I think we, the net amount was 1.91% that we were able to sell these bonds for. That's one of the lowest I've ever seen. I think Georgia's, collectively have never seen one that low.
According to the Hilltop Securities.
I'm gonna come up to that.
According to the Hilltop Securities, this is the lowest rate that they've got since 1886. At least when we went out. Oddly enough, as the week has progressed, they've been sending out letters, and I don't know what's going on on that end, that they were telling people, if you're trying to put out for something, adjust because now it's starting to go up. So we apparently hit it at the low point. And that's, that's where we are.
So we should have, it should have been last week, because that last week is, instead of today, because St. Patty's Day is today, we were lucky. It just, it worked out the way it did. But we'll certainly take that. And we may have a problem there, Mike. I don't know. Okay, so. So having said that, the documents that Ed has and all of you have, and Ed's, and the action, the way it works is that the board has to authorize the clerk of the board to sign this document. But you have to vote the document based on a motion that we prepared for that. But let me just explain something to you.
Is this the document that we're voting on?
Yeah, that's the vote you're gonna, that's the vote you're gonna take tonight, so.
Leah have a copy of this?
What's that?
It's in the board docs.
It's in the board docs, yeah.
All right, yeah.
Can she hear it?
I can hear you guys, yep, I have it.
Okay, great.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's interesting, because if you look at the, the percentages look like they're much higher. But what, the way that works is that there was actually a.
Premium.
A premium, thank you. And I was thinking about that word. So three, a $3,466,000 premium, that's, that was taken, which actually reduces the amount of money that's being borrowed. All right, so the way they did was they basically front-loaded the value of the bond. And they're gonna offset that and pay off a portion of the bond right up front. Which means that the, that over time, the net effect of that is 1.91%. And the reason they do that is because there was a tax advantage for doing it that way. And that which, and a lot of bond companies will do it that way. So we've had premiums in the past, and it is a little misleading to read the document as it's laid out for you. It looks like a much higher rate, but it's actually not, based on the fact you do get the premium right up front. All right, so it's, it's equivalent to that if you put, you know, three or four million dollars down on the bond and you're borrowing less money, so therefore your net effect is much smaller. So that's the best way I can explain it to you, in simple, in simplistic terms.
I never really did understand the premium until they said, I said, why would you pay when you're trying to get money off of it? And they said, because it's more important for the tax break.
So who's paying?
The actual people who bought the bond.
People who are holding the bond.
So they're almost like upfronting the money. And they're doing it apparently for tax purposes on their end. Now, if they could just explain to me negative interest, I'll try to figure that out too at some point. But I mean, at this point, this is what, they're paying it up front and it's for tax purposes. It's almost like they can take a loss for so many years or something to that effect.
It was, it was actually best explained to me when I, when we asked today about that. And it's funny, more people don't ask that question, but we do, we did, we did ask it.
So we went to them to borrow 26 million?
Right.
Right. Yes.
And we're in effect borrowing 23 million?
23 million, that's correct.
So they gave us.
Because they upfronted.
They gave us $3 million.
Right. And then tried, they charged.
They have to put it in equity stock, that's all it is, for the bonds.
Okay.
And we, and we've actually done this in the past. So this is not a unique thing. We've done it before with all the bonds. It's just the way it works and.
I think the size of the premium might be, you know.
This is a big premium, I've never seen one quite this big.
Yeah, which is good for us.
So we're, we're paying the first, what is that, 10 years, nine years? We're paying 5% interest on.
On the remaining.
On the remaining, on the 23 million instead of 26.
Okay.
Which when it net, when it's all netted out, comes to the 1.91%.
Everybody clear on that?
Yep.
Clear as mud.
All right, so Ed, I think you have.
Does he have to read the whole thing?
No, he does not.
Thank God.
We have a motion that we've worked on.
We need to get a little tangent.
That's right, it's a law, it's a law. We've asked and we don't have to do that. So Ed, if you, if you would please.
A motion to approve the sale of bonds is described in the document presented to the Board of Selectmen on the evening of March 17th, 2020, and is authorized by the clerk of the board, Edward T. O'Leary.
Second. Any further discussion?
Could I ask, maybe you do two or three of them, so that we'll have a couple of fresh, you know, copies for.
Sign, the sign.
All those in favor?
Thank you, congratulations.
Yeah, 1.9, lowest since 1898, you said?
Yeah, I, I think Wyatt Earp was running around about that time, you know, so.
Yeah, send few of them.
All right.
All right.
George, you're not leaving anywhere, are you?
No, I'm just gonna sit in the back here.
Okay, all right.
What do you, say your question?
Now, I think we're gonna have a lot of questions on revenue.
So we, so we will, we're gonna do the CIP, George, if you want, I was sticking around for that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just stay.
So, yeah, CIP review recommendation.
So we have before you tonight is the, is the CIP plan that was worked on by the committee over the past weekend. We obviously didn't fund the whole thing, that was requested by us, but it requested four of us. But the one thing that we did do was, is determine what we could, what we could financially afford. And then we worked on that, worked our way back through it. This is not the entire list, we do have a much larger list, but this is the list that was.
We voted on.
Voted by, by the committee. So you'll note that we, I think there was a comment made recently that we were gonna spend $3 million in free cash, which we didn't even come close to that. We actually spent $429,000 of free cash against this plan. That is the lowest amount that's been spent on, from free cash in the past 10, 11 years. That's a fact, and we've gone back and verified that. That's the lowest amount we've ever spent. We have spent, we spent another $545,000 from overlay surplus, which was, is money that we, we had about $2 million in that account. And the, and the Board of Assessors actually voted to free up about a million dollars of that. And that's the amount that we take off the top right before we start the budget process. And for a month that we may need for, for paying of, of, you know, elderly tax breaks or to, for people who may not pay their taxes on time, for veterans benefits, veterans tax breaks, things of that nature. So, and we've been finding that that amount is much lower. So this is surplus that's available for release, which was released by the assessors earlier last week. So it is available for use. We are also using some of that to pay for the, for the debt service that was, that we talked about that earlier when we gave our previous presentations. So we're using the overlay surplus for that purpose as well.
Five hundred and fifty?
$550,000, right. So of that amount, the 429,068 was the free cash. We used 450,000 of overlay surplus, $134,000, which came from the meals tax. And that was to help pay for the dam, match for the dam that we're doing about a million dollar improvement on West Street Dam. The Board recalled, we got a $750,000 grant, $79,000 grant from the state government to pay for that. And that's our matching portion of that, of those dollars. Another $106,000 of that was paid for with, with a portion of overlay surplus as well. So the fire department apparatus and vehicles is being purchased in two ways. We had the ambulance and the ambulance, and a, and a new chassis, and two new chassis for the, to existing ambulances. That amounted to $479,500, which will come out of EMS receipts reserved. And then we also had another $59,500 for a command vehicle. And that's, that's coming out of a, an account known as the, what is the name of that account, George?
The apparatus.
Apparatus receipts reserved, which is most that we get for renting those vehicles at various events throughout the year, for road, road jobs or for events at the stadium, et cetera. We, we collect that money and then we use it to help acquire or replace vehicles in the fleet. The water department's gonna pay for a new vehicle and replace two trucks, including plows and lift gates, the amount of $240,000, and that will come out of water free cash. Different type of free cash, it's on the water, on the water side, on the water revolving account. The other thing is, is, or the enterprise kind, I should say. The other, the other $50,000 is for the skater update, upgrade for the sewer system. And that's being paid for sewer free cash.
Right.
All right. So again, to be clear, there are three types of free cash that we're using. General, general fund free cash.
Water.
Water free cash and sewer free cash. Okay. We're using $650,000 for street reconstruction from the state, that's Chapter 90 money that's gonna be received by the town this year. We've already received the letter that will receive that amount. The water, and then we get down to the really big ticket item, which is the $9.4 million water, water borrowing amount. And $400,000 is for water vehicle storage unit in the office building, which is needed to protect the vehicles that they currently have down there. And the other one is a Route 1 water tank asset management fee, which is about $2 million over, over five years, which will actually be paid for. We're better off to pay for it with rates the way, how low they are. Even though, even though they may come up a little bit, we're still gonna be at historically low rates. And water system improvements, and that is for the, for the tank replacement and, and water, and underground sewer, water lines on West Street, is I believe, is the, is the construction project that they were designated there for. That's about a $2.5 million project to do that. So the total borrowing amount is a $9.4 million. And if we look at that, that should, we believe that number will fit within the existing rate structure that we have. And that's gonna be evaluated with, with Chris and his, his company over the next, next few weeks.
Assuming that the board votes for it, we wanna keep the fact that the capital turned this over to the board for the future.
Yes.
For the bonding later on, a year from now.
Exactly, so that's what, we're keeping this all very strictly limited, strictly separated to be clear about the fact that all these votes were taken to separately, so that they're then presented to the board for further consideration. So you, you have these before you tonight. If you have any questions about, about any of the projects, certainly let me know. But the one thing that I think is important for the public to hear is that we're not using significant amounts of our reserves to pay for these. We're using amounts that are available within the various accounts that were, that are usually used for this purpose. If we didn't have the $9.4 million, we would have had about $2.4 million of overall expenditures from various accounts. But of those $2.4 million, only $429,000 of that was being used for free cash. And I think that account was, was really concerning to those that had, that had, to folks that expressed that earlier, that we were gonna somehow use $3.5 million to do that. We clearly did not do that. We, at the end of the day, when the report, when all is said and done, we're gonna have a balance of about 3.3, and we think it may be up to as much as 3.5 based upon what the final budget comes in at. So we might be able to even bring that other $200,000 back into free cash.
That was your question, David, and perhaps if the state comes in with a little, if we ever get the second or third round of that, plus some cuts Bill did, that it could be, we could meet that three and a half that we originally wanted to do anyway.
And I'll talk about the budget in a few minutes and see, and show you that we actually have trimmed about $0.5 million. And that's despite the fact we got hit with a very late charge from the Southeastern Regional Vocational School of about $170,000, which was not anticipated. So despite that, we still were able to trim about $500,000 out of the account, out of the budget.
Any questions?
The overlay surplus money.
Yep.
Looks like $500,000 or $600,000?
It was a million in total that we've used. $550,000 for, on the budget prime to cover the bonding that we just did. And then $450,000 that you're looking at on that particular sheet, so it's a million.
Okay, so with that overlay surplus money, if we say we didn't spend any of it on that, what happens with that money? Can that money roll into free cash?
No, overlay sur, overlay stays an overlay until released by the assessors upon request from the accountant, okay? So if we hadn't used it, it would have stayed there. Then maybe next year you would have used it again, or, you know, or for something else. It's important to point out that every year, there's a new overlay created. So this year, when we did 2020, we went for $1,100,000. The average is about $400,000 in real abatements that are coming out of it. So it keeps recharging itself for, for future use.
Which considerations?
When you, I didn't get a chance to watch the CIP meeting. I mean, we didn't have Governor Baker's news of Sunday night at 6 o'clock. So how much discussion was there around the economy and?
A lot.
A lot.
A lot.
Yeah.
I was very concerned about, you know, revenue. What's gonna happen with the meals tax, what's gonna happen with occupancy tax.
Right. And those only got greater that Sunday night at 6 o'clock.
Right, so you're gonna see probably a hit in the fourth quarter of 2020, right? And then probably the first quarter of 2021. So how long that's gonna last, nobody knows. But when you look at the cash on hand and the surplus, we're, we're in a good position. Even going to $3.5 million in free cash, we're still above our, still ahead of our financial policy where we wanna be. So at the end of the day, I felt okay with the $400,000 in free cash and the surplus.
We added the perspective that over the past 10 years, we've been averaging around $2.7 million a year in free cash after we pay for the capital plan.
Meaning putting it back.
Yes, right. So, and then there was, what's particularly interesting though was when I, when we looked at that in comparison to the past 10, this is significantly lower than we've ever used before. So we, I think the lowest amount that had been used prior to, to this amount was about $700,000. 700,000 dollars, if I'm not mistaken. But we've used as much as 2.3, 2.4, year after year after year, of free cash to pay for capital plans. And this year, we took a very conservative approach, probably the most conservative we've ever taken.
Have you done any revenue forecasting for the next six, eight months?
We we've been, what I I don't forecast forward, I look where we we are at the moment. I've got the the last two quarters and of course, two weeks out from now, I'll have the third quarter, which we'll we'll put in. I think the most important thing to think about, and I and I can't come back at you and say, you know, I've got, I I know exactly where we're going to be. I mean, because how big or bad this is going to be, I I don't know. I can only tell you that when we projected at the beginning of the year, I I tend to be extremely conservative. So I never even put this up any further than what we had collected in the year 2019. And in 2019, there were about 400 to 500,000 dollars that never came in. It didn't come in until this year because there was nobody here to to put out bills to the stadium. So you're really backwards by by that amount. So we got a good 400, 500,000 dollar space in there, okay?
Do you understand what that that is?
You know what I'm saying?
So we we we're going to collect about 400, 500,000 dollars twice this year that we would, that we didn't pick it up last year, so we would have picked it up this year. So we're artificially low in terms of our number was for this fiscal year. If it was three and a half million, it really should have been closer to four.
Right.
And there we go. So that's why we're comfortable with.
So you're in good shape.
That position.
Yeah. So, you know, there was nobody here at the time when before June 30th, they actually put out the bills, so we collected it after the fact.
Right.
And it's in here now. So, you know, now, I mean, if it turns out to be a million or something or 2 million, I mean, you know, I I I'm going to say if if we're going to get get hit to that level, then the whole world's going to get hit to that level, then probably something will come along. But I think we're in about as good a shape as you're going to get at the moment. And I can, in about two weeks, once we've got the fourth quarter, I mean, the third quarter revenues in, I can give you an update. I I know that the half year was was doing pretty good. We were running around a half, you know, about 50% of where we thought we were going to be. And then we just got some pretty major stuff that just.
And we just got a major payment from the stadium for the NFL season, and we also got, and we haven't picked up our motor vehicle excise.
Right. Well, it wasn't in there, it's the half.
Wasn't in the first half.
You collect you you collect that in the last.
So will you have in, when will we have an update in two weeks, or you need a couple of weeks to?
Probably a little bit, just to make sure they've got it, and especially with the slowness of everything coming in.
Probably in the middle of April, Chris. We should have a good handle on that.
You can you can eyeball it and say, wow, okay, there's there's some there's some money there, but it'll be nice and solid when I when I've got the the third quarter results.
Bear in mind that we're watching that very carefully, too, because we're mindful of what's going on, too. We're not we're not trying to be irresponsible about any of that.
Any further questions? Do we need a vote or?
You know, it wasn't on your agenda for a vote tonight, but it was it was to review it with you. So I would say you can hold it for for two weeks, and then we'll we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I'd rather.
Okay.
Watching that.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Ultimately, though, right, you want to vote on it so that.
The board will have to vote on it, though. The Advisory Committee has postponed its meeting for tomorrow night, so you don't really have to act on this until for at least, I mean, you're going to have to need to act on it in two weeks, but but at that point, because we have to give it to the AdCon for their consideration.
Do you have any idea what they're in a, what if they postpone their meeting, what is their plan for the next foreseeable future?
They're going to, I think they're going to plan to meet next week, but I think this week it was, I think a lot of people are just trying to figure out how we're going to proceed from here. That's, and I may, it's entirely possible that that town meeting might get postponed till the end of May or maybe the early June. It's possible. I mean, we can still operate, you know, and we've, and and the governor's legislation allows us to continue to operate even beyond the end of the fiscal year with with several steps being made. And this board will have to be part of that process. And then we'll have to, we could work on a one-twelfth budget until you actually act on it, till the end of town meeting.
We're going to put on all the remote meeting policy and go right to a declaration of local state of emergency.
So I participated last week.
Just going back to the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The budget and the warrant, okay? So.
Sorry, Mike.
So so I I did provide the board, and it's actually in your in your board talks tonight, a summary of where we are with the with the overall budget right now. And I continue to make some cuts based upon more information as it become became available to us. And I haven't shared this with the Advisory Committee yet because I wanted to share it with you first. But we are at a point now where I've trimmed 200 and almost 300,000 dollars out of the town side of the budget. And so we're, the overall increase for this year is now at 2.28% for the town side of the budget. The school is is remain remains at 3.82%. And and we'll continue to look at that, but I don't anticipate that to change all that much over the next several, over the next several weeks. Overall, the the budget is, the town and school combined is up 3.31%, right? Now, if we if we go and if you look at this document, it'll show you that I've actually been able to trim in certain areas.
Five hundred and five.
Yeah, the 505 is, I'll get to that in a second, but yeah, and it's, but overall, on the town side of the budget, I'm able to reduce the the southeastern Mass regional 911 center appropriation down to 310,000 dollars from, originally it was around 500,000. So because we're getting more state state money to come in. Actually, it's actually the the 911 tax that's going to be coming back to us. So it's not even a state funding tax. So just be mindful of that. So and that's going to be coming to us. And then on top of that, the, we were able to trim, of course, the the money associated with the debt service on the budget. And so that we've we've been able to reduce that down so that our our general fund was trimmed, our general fund costs have now been trimmed down to 300, by 392,535. And which means, which is now takes the the overall general fund budget down to 4.62, which was significantly higher without the without the debt, the bonds being sold at the rate at which we sold them. So we're able to reduce those numbers. The overall budget increase has been, we've actually reduced that by a total of 505,000 if we include the water and sewer funds, because again, we took we took a much significant less cost, if reduced cost, rather, on the on the debt service for the water and sewer bond, for the water bonds. So that was reduced by another 107,000 dollars. So the net reduction in costs is is coming in at 505,062,65. Now, it could have been as high as, well, close to 700,000 dollars worth of cuts, if in fact, if you take a look, if you if you look at the second page, where you see under town audit, southeastern regional. If you take a look at that number, that number was projected to come in around around 513,000 dollars, and that was with a a 7% increase or 35,000, 36,000 dollar increase. It actually came in at at 683,112 or 170,000 dollar increase or 43% increase over the existing budget. So obviously, we can't talk to them right now, but we will and find out what's caused that to happen. But we're told that there were 10 new students coming from Foxborough to that program. And there also is a new formula that has been developed by the state to, which doesn't help towns like Foxborough who actually do a good job of funding their school programs. So we're almost being penalized in some some way, shape, or form because of the fact that we're putting money into the school system.
So between the charter school assessment and southeastern, it's costing the town about 3 million dollars annually?
That's right. That's right.
Very close.
The good news is that the the charter school assessment did go down a little bit this year.
From 2.4 to 2.1.
Yeah, yeah. So that's a that's a better scenario than it has been in the past, but this collectively didn't help us. But the fortunate part about it is that we were able to still make cuts in other areas, which which was able, so we didn't get, we weren't happy about the fact that we got that additional cost, but we actually were in a much better position to address it than perhaps some of the other communities were because we were, because we got some favorable actions in other areas.
But you're going to ask southeast why?
Yes. Well, they're going to have to come in and make a presentation to you about that because we, that's a significant hit. We just want to know why and what's what's driving that number.
They just need to know what night you want them to come by.
Right. And so we'll probably, the question is when? I don't even know when the.
They won't tell you why?
They did, they did. I actually spoke to him, but he offered to come in to give a.
Presentation is why, is why.
But essentially, it it came down to 10 new students. And like Bill said, we're actually paying a sin tax now because we're rich, is basically what the what the issue is. This is the, this is the rich town, so now we got to pick up for all the other towns they can afford.
The fact that we're well-funded in our school system is, it's not a bad thing for Foxborough, obviously, but it but it does work against us when 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 looking at those other regional programs.
Any other questions?
Would it be appropriate to see if that person could come in for the next meeting?
He, well, yeah, I mean, he offered, we just.
They're prepared to come in. The question is, are they actually in school? That's issue number one. And then are we going to be able to get them in here, given the circumstances?
Okay.
So we're going to have to wait and see. We certainly will get them in here before you take action on the budget.
Okay. Thank you. You don't need action from us right now. That was just.
I don't. That's, that was more information from you on that. And then as far as the warrant goes, you have the warrant in your in your files. There's no real surprises in the warrant this year to speak of. Are there any particular articles that we should talk to the board about tonight, Mike?
I don't think so. I mean, I've got the two contracts that were, you know, that's the, that are working on steelworkers and then police, you know, we don't know anything on that yet. And the town meeting running a little bit later might actually help to get it in the spring. The other ones, I don't think any big surprises there.
All right.
I noticed a typo earlier when I was looking at this at home. I'm trying to find it now.
Sorry, you can let us know.
Page eight, Article 16. The A is missing an article.
Page eight?
Yeah. And trust me, I didn't go through this with a fine-tooth comb. It just jumped out.
Stuck out.
I will take care of that. This is in final form anyways. So this is, yeah, I see that, yeah.
Going down to Declaration of Local State of Emergency. Explain why we have to do that, Bill, and what we have to.
This was recommended by our our attorneys. So I participated on March 12th in a in a client advisory phone conference. So our labor attorneys, Clifford and Kenny, sent out a message to all the all the towns that they represent. So it was mostly a labor-related, you know, discussion with with many, you know, more than 20 towns involved, and they gave us an opportunity to ask questions. One of the things that they did recommend, now, they are not our town council, they are our labor council, but they are town council to to many communities, so they work in that capacity. And one of the things they recommended is that the board adopt this this local declaration of state of emergency. You know, there's, you know, it's been adopted at the federal level, at the state level. And what it does is it may open opportunities for funding for for the unforeseen. So we don't know exactly what it provides us, but it can't hurt to adopt this. It doesn't mean that we are at a critical emergency stage at all. It's saying that we're prepared because we know that there could be costs associated with this, and if some of those costs are, can be reclaimed from the state, you know, from what the state gets from the federal government, we want to provide that opportunity. And what we're doing is our fire chief, who is our emergency director, he he has recommended to to all departments, any costs that you incur specific to this emergency, that those are well-tracked. So the town is doing that. And this this kind of gives a, you know, the the opportunity to 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 apply for that if if it applies.
I think it's, I just want to add to Mike's comments that this is not, it's not that we're in any way, shape, or form any worse than any other community in Massachusetts. We are simply in a position where we've been, it's been recommended to us that we declare this for the fact that, as Mike points out, that it's, it actually provides us greater flexibility to to operate the town during times like this, and also makes us eligible for federal and state funding if it becomes available to us later down the road. So a lot of times, communities make the mistake of not doing this and then and then find themselves in a position that they're not eligible for any kind of refunds from the federal state government because they didn't do it. So it's, it is important for us to take that step at this point.
I noticed Sharon enacted in this. Any other local towns do this?
I haven't checked, Chris, but I know that a number of people that I have talked to have all taken the steps as well. Rantham is in, is doing this. I know that Mansfield's taking the step as well. There's a number of communities that are doing it, but I don't know how many people total have done it.
I can attest to, not necessarily for this situation, but I think we did it five or six times in East Bridgewater, every time that it appeared to be a larger-than-normal snowstorm.
Yeah.
Because if FEMA came in after the fact, we would, we would say we declared this.
I think we've done similar to this when we've had the snowstorms and had to set up shelters. A question, you had mentioned that our labor council recommended this. Did our regular town council?
No, but primarily, the reason why the labor council did is because at the time, Mike was was working to try and secure agreements with all the unions to try and just to be flexible in terms of our practices during this unprecedented period. And and then that was one of the things that had been recommended, came out of the gate, was, you know, make sure the town, the town adopts a state of emergency because that that allows you to operate under that context.
I don't have any other questions.
Any other further discussion? So we should read the whereas's and?
Yeah, we should probably read it.
Read it into the record if you would, please.
Whereas is the worldwide outbreak of COVID-19 and the effects of its extreme risk of person-to-person transmission throughout the United States and the Commonwealth significantly affect the life and health of our people as well as the economy, and is a disaster that impacts the health, security, and safety of the public. And whereas, the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has issued a declaration of emergency on March 10th, 2020, and determined that the immediate public action is needed to prevent, minimize, or mitigate damage to public health, safety, or general welfare of the people of the Commonwealth and/or property, which may otherwise result from the above described emergency. And whereas, the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has recommended that a state of emergency be declared in local communities, and whereas, the people of the community of Foxborough should be able to depend upon guidance from the chief municipal officers. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectment of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, hereby declare that immediately and effective as of March 17th, 2020, a state of emergency is declared to exist in the Town of Foxborough. This declaration of emergency shall remain in effect until notice is given pursuant to our judgment that the state of emergency no longer exists. Did we vote on that? Are we?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Right.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And what came out from your discussions with the unions? Mike?
Sure. So so the template that you just read into the record, that was that was drafted by our attorney, and the the five, actually, six side letters were also drafted, the template, by our labor attorney. And so the. And so the, so I've, I've met with most of the unions, but not all, but I wanted to bring these all in front of you, what these declarations do. So all of our unions have contracts, and renewable contracts. So we're in uncharted waters, and we're having to flex people's schedules, alternate, there, there may be people in the future that have to be quarantined, either self-quarantine or, or mandated to quarantine. They're, so we're trying to, on the advice of our labor council, we are opening flexibility on the use of sick time. So if somebody has symptoms and goes home, you know, we're not requiring them to have a doctor's note, because under the advice of our attorneys, and we agree, it may not be in the best interest of our, our, that employee, or their family, or the, the workforce here in general, to send them to an emergency room, or send them to, to healthcare necessarily. It might be best to just send them home on a two-week quarantine. This opens the flexibility for that to happen without making it a, a past practice. So a lot of times, if you've been doing something for a while, it can come back to haunt you. Well, you've allowed this to happen for two months, so we expect this to happen forever. This, the town benefit of that is, this is only until the end of that state of emergency, that this sort of flexibility, with regular sick time as well as family sick leave, so we, you know, with schools closed, we do have families with situations where, you know, a parent may be, you know, stuck in a cot in a hospital in Boston, and the other parent may be working here, and they may have to flex some, and we want to provide that flexibility to our employees to the max extent possible. The other thing is, we have situations, and we probably will continue to have situations, where somebody can't come in and work during the regular hours, but they can still work, so they're not sick, but they may be able to come in before or after hours and, and do their work. So this provides us the flexibility to do those things, and then ends when this state of emergency has ended. So the language as presented by our, our attorneys has been adopted as written by our DPW union, representing the three, actually four different divisions, as well as our, the two units of our Steelworkers Union, as well as our Library Union, and the Police and Fire. You know, they've been presented this, I haven't received any opposition from the Police Department, and there hasn't been enough time for the Fire Department to be able to review this yet, because I got it to them late. So I just wanted you to see all of these and let you know that three unions, including the two, two units and one of them, have agreed to this if it's agreeable to the Board of Selectment. And under advisement of our labor attorney, you know, we're told and we believe that these are good measures to adopt by the town, to protect both the town's interests as well as our, our employees' interests.
Any questions?
So this, this side letter removes any precedent?
It will. So, so any precedent afterwards, so that they can't come back and say, well, we want flexible hours, we want flexible use of family sick leave, those sort of things, exactly. When the state of emergency ends, so does this side letter.
Do we have to vote these in any specific order?
No.
Question, with, with the two that we have, the other unions you mentioned, Police, Fire, I mean, are they all virtually the same documents, the same leave we're talking about?
So these are identical, with the exception of the library wanted to add a little bit of language relative to checking out an in of books, and, you know, what hazards does that, does that present? So we wrote into that at the end of theirs, a, a best practices that will be agreed to between the library director and the library union, and then presented to all the employees of the, of the union, as well as, you know, an update anytime there's, there's any sort of changes in the, in the status of procedures in the town relative to coronavirus, that the library director will review those with the library union. Otherwise, these contracts are all the same, and so far have been, you know, adopted because it's, it's just as good for the employees as it is for the town to not, you know, carry these past practices.
Any further discussion? Should we vote on all five?
Leah, do you have anything?
No, I guess, the only thing I would say, and it's kind of more clerical, just, these must have been uploaded at some point today, and if we don't get a notification, you don't necessarily know it's there if you went out, you know, earlier. Same thing with the budget document, I don't know if that was out there and I just missed it, but if stuff is uploaded after the fact, if you can just give us a heads up, you know, I didn't review this ahead of time just because I didn't see this out here on my own.
Okay, that's, that's good to know, because I didn't realize when something's uploaded later that you wouldn't get a notification. So if we have to do that in the, in the future, like we had to do this one late because we were still negotiating these, we will send out email notifications that something's been uploaded after we did the, you know, the original upload to Board Docs, that was, that's, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, you sent out the, the generic one, so thank you for that, but just, you know, these more detailed ones.
Sure. And I, I think you should consider voting all of them, we don't have the union votes on the, on the Police and Fire, but if you're comfortable with the language, I think you're safe to vote those, and then if there are any changes as far as, you know, coming back from the union leadership in the, either Police or Fire, then we would bring that back to you.
Okay, I'm comfortable with you guys.
So just for clarification, the, the Police and Fire, we don't even have a copy of it?
Yes.
And we're going to vote it?
They, they should be all in there right now.
All five are on Board Docs.
The, the two just aren't signed by the union.
Oh, all right, when I checked before I left the house tonight, they weren't there.
Yeah, I was still on the phone with, with folks for the last four days.
I apologize, because I printed them all out and everything.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Vote individually or vote as a group?
I would vote them individually, the, the, the five different documents. Actually, it's six, because we've got two, two units within the Steelworkers, so six documents.
Does that have all six?
I see five.
Five and then the letter, like the...
Steelworkers count as A and B.
That, that could be voted together, I mean, they're exactly the same, and they're both part of the same local.
I don't want to open up any cans of worms or anything, but I want to throw this question out there. So in the, going back and forth with the unions and talking about this, talking with labor attorneys, talking about COVID-19 in general and liability, has that discussion come up throughout this, like, say, the library, for instance, or town hall, or any of the municipal buildings? If an employee is working and somebody walks in and, and, you know, they get virus, is, has liability been discussed in this? And then it, I mean, it goes into a workman's comp situation?
So that was discussed by the labor attorney, and, and that is, is not necessarily something that would be either a worker's comp or a, or a 111F, you know, in the case of, of public safety, because this is, this is something that could be incurred anywhere. So, you know, because they're here, it doesn't make them more susceptible than, you know, being in the supermarket, or in the car, or at home, you know, this is, this is everywhere, could be everywhere. So, so no, we're, and I actually have that in writing from our, from our attorney, that that this, this does not open up worker's comp or 111F liability.
I don't see the library one unless I'm missing it, that's the one I don't see.
Library, Steelworkers, aren't they, or is that a separate?
No, it's, it's a separate one.
Yeah, I don't see library.
Yep, you're right.
Okay, I don't see it either. Oh, no, I don't see it either. So do you have the original for signature? I can, I can read that one to you, the difference in that from the other ones, if, if that would be okay, and then pass it down? Would that be sufficient?
Yeah, it works for me.
So the only difference in, in the library one, let me just make absolutely sure of So the ones in front of you have provisions 1, A through E, the, the library one also has three other provisions, F, G, and H, so I'll read those. F, as I mentioned, is a best practices, the library director in conjunction with health officials and the union shall develop a list of best practices for the handling of library materials and interaction with patrons. The list of best practices is to be updated as necessary and distributed to staff, and I can talk a little bit more about that after I read the other two. Communications with the union, the library director shall provide an update on coronavirus-related decisions and precautions to a designated representative of the union daily. And H, this agreement is subject to modification by mutual agreement of the parties, any changes will be memorialized in writing. And we have agreed between the town and the union and the union's rep, that that writing could be through email, you know, should we be remote at some point. Otherwise, that's the same as the other, as the other agreements.
Did you say labor council has reviewed those three provisions?
They have not. So these, so labor council made the template document, and then, and then advised that we go and open up discussion with the unions about what the specifics, which is basically A through H for this one, what those are, those need to be agreements between the town and the, and the union employees. So they, the, our labor attorney recommended that we adopt these side letters, and also adopt, you know, recommended that, you know, 1 and 2 in the, in the general language, but the specifics were negotiated between myself and the union leadership over the last four days.
So I, I get that they drafted the whole template, but have they reviewed the three items you just read out loud? Is that a yes or no?
The labor attorney has not.
The answer is no, Leah, the, the reason why is because they, we literally finished these negotiations like 6:00 tonight to get these done, so, and so, I mean, we can certainly do that in case there's anything that needs to be amended, but based upon what I've read so far, they seem to be fine. I didn't, I didn't see anything that was, that was alarming to me in any way, shape, or form, but we can certainly have it reviewed with Jamie, we'll sit down with her.
I do have a two-page guidance document that was provided to us, as well as these templates, that we used to form those specific, you know, A through H, and in the other cases, A through E, and I, I followed those specifically, and, and so the, the, the main areas under this client advisory on coronavirus from Clifford and Kenny LLP were employees exhibiting signs of illness, and it goes into the different areas of, of what we should be addressing, and then medical notes. They, they specifically, you know, said that we, we shouldn't be requiring our folks to, to have medical notes, although in our contracts, we are allowed to, you know, to require medical notes at, you know, with three days of illness. Remote work, they, they went, our labor attorneys went through, you know, what we should be addressing as far as remote work. Also, several paragraphs on sick leave and other paid time off, and so they, they were very specific on this, as well as the, the question that you just asked on worker's comp and, and, and 111F. So I did follow this, the guidance document on this, but, and the reason they did this is because they were getting pummeled with questions by all of their clients, us being one of them, and so they wanted to do a phone conference with the, you know, with the human resources directors, and Sarah, our human res- resources specialist, was on that phone conference with me, and then follow up with specific templates and guidance in drafting the, the subsections of this. So we did follow this very specifically. But the last three that, that were, that you questioned, no, those were, those were added later and, and are not outside of the guidance of what our labor attorneys have, have advised.
Okay.
Little more clarification from me, so there's, the overall agreement is one, and then we have five contracts that we're going on?
That's correct.
Okay, and those five, which unions have said, yeah, we're good with these?
So the DPW, which is AFSMI Union, they have signed it. The Library Union, they have signed it. The Steelworkers Union, which has two units, A and B, they have signed it. So you have four signed documents, including the library, which I just read from, the two which are not signed because I have not had time to review these with Police and Fire, although I've provided to them, albeit somewhat late, those ones they have, and, and they have not signed yet, because I need to finish reviewing them with them.
But they've seen a draft of it and they haven't pushed back?
That's correct. In the, in the case of Police, I have discussed that with them on the phone, there's not been any pushback yet. In the case of Fire, we just have not been able to have dialogue on it, but I have, I have provided it, and, and I've also provided these to all the department heads and chiefs, so they've seen them.
And I mean, we're in total unprecedented areas, have we ever done something like this before where the board has approved something that hasn't been approved by?
It, it may have, but I, I can't, it's not happened since I've been here, I can tell you that. This is, this is a very unique situation.
All right. So your suggestion then is I'll go and read a motion individually for those that have signed an agreement, or just one general one incorporating?
I initially said, you know, each one, but I, I think, I think we're probably safe to do one general one, I mean, they're, you know, it, it's all the same intent and written under the same guidance.
The only thing I would, I think one is also a good idea, but instead of maybe the word "union," include the...
Include the names of each union.
The names of the union under the one big motion.
Yeah.
Okay, you got that, Ed? Okay, thanks.
And can we, can we make it pending the approval, or, you know, if there's any changes?
I would say subject to any, any, any changes, suggested change by town, by the labor council.
I'm comfortable with that.
And Ed, when you get to reading these off, I, I can read the, you know, the specific names of each union, if, if that would help.
If, and just a, just a further comment, that if we do come up with any changes, we'll certainly let, let the board know what they are, just to be aware of that.
If there are any changes, would we have to potentially revoke this?
No, because if you give us authorization to, unless it's, it's something that is, you know, it's substantial.
Motion to accept side letters of agreement between the town and the following unions, Steelworkers Unit A and B, Public Works, Boyd &amp; Library, Police, and Fire. During the state of emergency. During the state of emergency. And what was that last thing you, you added on? The last, no, pending approval?
Pending, pending review and approval by the town council, labor council.
Yeah. Okay, still second. All those in favor? Okay, great, thank you. Assistant Town Manager's update?
Okay, so we've been talking a lot about the health of our employees, and the health and service to our residents, as well as the continuity of services, so as we've traveled around to, to the different departments, different buildings, you know, that's the message that we've been carrying, we're, we're looking out for you as employees, we are, you know, looking to continue services to the, to the max extent we can without endangering our employees. without endangering our employees. And as you can see in those side letters that we just did, we're looking to flex as this emergency evolves. One thing that we're doing is we're continuing to communicate. And that's one area where I know that I can do a better job with communicating with our employees. So I've spent a lot of time doing this legalese. And now tomorrow morning, I've got to hit the ground with, you know, actually reaching out and talking to our individual departments. And that's an area I know where I can do better. And we'll be doing better tomorrow now that I've freed up a little bit of time. We talked a little bit about staggering and alternating our workforce schedules, as well as, you know, some of what they're actually doing for work. And we've been ensuring our employees that, you know, we're looking to keep them working, keep paying them, and allow them to use their sick time without notes in a flexible manner and keep their health benefits going. So that's my update and where I've been focusing my time over the last few days.
So Mike has been more focused on the operational side of things. My goal has been to try and communicate mostly to the public, also to communicate with the community at large. Excuse me, I'm just getting dry. Communicate with the community at large and also to help coordinate with state and federal agencies with our public safety folks and to take a look at the fact and see how, you know, we can help each other. So one of the things that, you know, we've received contact from Gillette Stadium, asking, reaching out to us, excuse me, that whether or not we've had any kind of, if we need anything at all, that they'd be happy to help us. You know, I've received contact by? That's right. We need, we received a contact from Ed Hurley from the YMCA, the Hockamock YMCA, indicating that they're willing to help us in any way, shape, or form. And certainly, it's been a very complicated time. I mean, we're, this is unprecedented. I've never seen anything quite like this, none of us have. And so we're sort of learning as we go. But yet, I've been truly inspired and amazed by how people sort of come together and really have been helpful. And now that we're in a position now, we're really trying to continue to help in any way we can and help and continue to coordinate things the best way we can. But operationally, Mike's done a great job. The folks in our office have been great. Christina's been trying to get the word out. If there's things, suggestions, and Caitlin, of course, has done a great job as well. And so she, and she's learning as she goes along. She's still trying to figure out which way is up, you know, in many ways, but she's doing a great job of learning as she goes. And so we're really glad to see that happen. I think we really can use the help that anybody wants to offer us. I mean, we're not, this is an area we're not really all that, you know, we don't know a lot about. I mean, so if people have suggestions, we welcome them. So feel free, if you have ideas and if we can do them, if they make sense to us, we'll certainly try and engage in getting them done. Because this is something that we want to be helpful to everybody, but we have to be careful in how we do it. And we certainly want to not put our employees in harm's way in the process. But yet, we want to continue with providing the services that the residents expect us to provide. So that's where we're at. That's my report. Again, we're going to continue to communicate as best we can, but primarily on the Foxborough local side, not on the state and federal side because that's being done already in a very adequate way. Glad to see that they're doing that, what they're doing for us.
Like I said earlier, I would just make sure, like, any updates are easy, accessible on the website.
Right.
That people don't have to look for them, they're right there. And I would push out as much information, you know, you guys are in the thick of it every day, but there's other people out there that aren't in it. And the more you can communicate, sometimes even if there's no update, a no-update update is good. The other thing that comes to mind is what are or what is the senior center and our senior citizens, like, is there a way where people can help and volunteer without, you know, coming into contact? So if you could talk to Mark and see what kind of needs there are. I mean, I know checking on, you know, your elderly neighbors to see if they need something at the grocery store or something, so.
So Mark has been working closely with fire rescue and Tom Kenvin and Board of Health to see what in fact, on the human services side, we can provide for help as well as for the seniors themselves. So again, that's, those are great ideas about, you know, how do you reach out to folks? You also have to limit your contact with people. And that's, you know, so it's kind of one of the things where we want to be careful not to engage too many people to help because then it becomes challenging on that end.
Do you have any insight from the school side? I know there's, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I know there's a lot of students that are on, you know, lunch programs. So what is the plan?
They are working through that piece of it right now. I don't have the details in front of me, Chris, but I know that they are actively engaged in making sure meals are available for kids, especially those that don't, that sort of rely on the school system to help keep them fed.
Now, is that coming from the school system? Is the school system doing something?
Yes. At some point, they'll, we're going to hope to get some sort of reimbursement on that from the state or the federal government. But they're actively working on that end of it at this point, too.
Yeah, come on, Bill, because you talk quietly.
There's enough space.
Tomorrow is going to be a run into the Great Boston Food Bank.
Oh, because I don't know how much is.
Back to the Ern School through the food pantry. And there will be a distribution on Thursday packaged by, as I understand it, the Ern School food service personnel.
Okay.
Now, whether that will morph into something different or whether that will be a template, you know, going forward, I'm not sure. And I'm not sure whether it will be, I know this is a once, one a week for this coming week, whether that will be more frequent. I guess all of that is to be determined.
Okay. Do you know if the food pantry needs volunteers? I know I saw something where at this time, they would greatly appreciate donations of monetary amount.
I mean, at this time, I would say that's to be determined, too. I mean, I really need to see kind of how this goes tomorrow and Thursday. And then plans can be made. You know, in terms of participation, you know, how many people show up? You know, right now, it's kind of flying by the seat of pants.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, keep me posted if you need something.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other thing. And that is, you know, just to reach out to our employees who have been absolutely fantastic. They've risen to the occasion and there's a lot of uncertainty. And they're here at work, sometimes wondering, you know, why am I here? Am I put in danger? And we've reminded them, you're public servants. We're certainly not going to intentionally put you in danger, but you're held to a higher standard. And, you know, we need you here. At a point, if we don't need you here, then we'll, you know, look at going a different direction. But our folks have risen to the occasion, they've been fantastic. I do want to say that we sent three people home today from three different departments because they had, you know, it might have been the sniffles, it might have been nothing. You can imagine out of nearly 200 employees that, you know, you're going to have three or six people sick on any given day. But we sent them home and then we followed up with Deputy Chief Kenvin to call each of them and find out what their specific symptoms were, who they were in contact with. And we've brought in facilities who have been fantastic, coming in, cleaning those workstations and, you know, in the follow-up. It may turn out that, you know, they had colds or the flu or this or that. But if it turns out to be, you know, coronavirus, we will know and we'll have that history of where they were, when they were sent home, who they were in contact. So we're not living in fantasy land here, but we're just being extremely cautious, one, to protect those individuals, and two, to protect the rest of the workforce so that we can continue to provide public services. But our, you know, our folks have just been tremendous. They've risen to the occasion.
I would second that.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Question, while you guys are still on your update, and I probably should have asked it earlier, on Governor Baker's relaxing of the open meeting laws. So what if we needed, as a board, to have an emergency meeting tomorrow or the next day? I mean, hosting requirements, are they waived or are they still the same or?
I don't know that that particular issue came up during the most recent legislation, but this is, but any kind of an emergency meeting would probably get beyond the requirements anyways. But we have to, it has to be a full-scale emergency. We have to understand what emergency.
Followed us just declaring a state of emergency.
We're in a state of emergency. So at this point in time, I'm not sure how those rules even apply under those conditions.
Because I can remember back in, I think it was those October snowstorms, there were emergency meetings every single day at the public safety building, town officials and anybody. So, I mean, I'm not saying we're there, but we might be, you know, at some point.
Understood. And I think, I mean, at that point, I'm not sure who's really going to complain. If we're trying to, I'll try to do the right thing under those conditions.
Somebody might.
Somebody always does.
Yeah, I was going to say, it'll happen, someone will.
And if they do, then I think that, then we're certainly prepared to address that in a productive way.
Yeah.
Right.
The other thing we've talked about is, you know, as far as these public meetings, you know, the technology is being tested out right now with Leo being set up to, you know, to be in, you know, in here video conferencing with you and be able to take the votes, participate fully. And then so that in two weeks, you know, if we can't meet here because things have changed, you know, we could all be.
We could all be virtual.
Somewhere else and, you know, or it may be three of us here spread out across this room and the rest of you coming in by TV. But technology's been terrific in setting this up in very short order and making sure that we could, you know, do this in the future.
Thank you. Selectment's update, anybody have? There was a new business, but we're going to postpone that for now. Anybody have anything?
I just want to thank all, everybody town-wide that is working diligently to make sure that we can still run.
Yeah, and I guess I kind of want to just piggyback off of that, just that, you know, this is an unprecedented situation we're all living in and dealing with. It's sort of like the world's a little upside down right now. It's sort of like a Hollywood movie that we're in the middle of. And just for everybody to be diligent and certainly patient, you know, with us, things are changing so quickly that it's hard for us to stay on top of it. But even while I was away, this, over the weekend, we were all in contact with each other and keeping each other updated, so. And we just learned a lot more today about keeping the public more updated. So, you know, it's a learning process for us, too. So hopefully, the citizens will be patient with everybody. All right, action items.
Item number one, a motion to approve a donation of $30 donation to the Veteran Services from John D. Johnston Jr. and Juanita K. Johnston in memory of Edith Butler.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to approve a donation of $100 donation to Veteran Services from Richard Sigrist in memory of Edith Butler.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to approve a donation of $20 donation from Veteran Services from Linda Travers for care packages postage.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to approve a donation of $2,500 to the Foxborough YMCA from a 2017 $10,000 Plainridge Park donation made to the Foxborough Police Department.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. Can you explain that at all, Bill? Or George? I mean, it sounds.
When it was originally put in from the Plainville, you see, they told, the way it was taken in by the Board of Selectmen then, it was to set up a task force or something to that effect, which never happened. So the chief wanted to repurpose it, you know, for opioid stuff, of course.
Opioid addictions.
Right, addictions. But it didn't really read that way. So I believe he went back to Plainville and asked for a letter to say, are you good with us doing this? And then you would, you as the Board of Selectmen would say, we're good with you repurposing this. And it's for a program over at the YMCA to keep kids off of opioids.
Okay. So it says up to $2,500?
Correct.
Right. Right. Because it's supposed, like, a number of kids to be on there. And I guess it would be, you know, if they had, you know, if they didn't get as many, you know, I mean, it would be lower.
So they made that donation in 2017, so the $10,000 has just been sitting there?
It's just been sitting there and nothing's happened with it.
Okay.
What happened during that period of time is that we actually got more involved with a regional group that more or less took over the brunt of that effort. And then, so this money was sitting there, it's available to us. And then the chief said, well, why can't we use it in another way?
Okay.
So we.
Yeah, that's good. Just the way it was worded without any context to it was a little confusing. Good.
All those in favor? Motion to approve a public event application for Foxborough Cares 5K race on May 30th.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Discussion, so the next five or six things are all event applications that, you know, are coming up? I mean.
Should all be contingent.
Contingent on.
The events happen.
And speaking of that, there was one more, now, since you brought it up. I apologize, I got it on my other notes, but not this one. Speaking about events that are being postponed, Cleanup Foxborough is going to be postponed until September. A date to be determined specifically, but due to everything that's going on and so many of the volunteers are senior citizens and children, the Foxborough Cleanup Committee, Tina and, committee, huh? AJ. I kept thinking RJ, but AJ, I knew I was wrong. Decided to postpone till the fall.
Okay.
Thank you for.
So with these ones, then we'll just discuss them individually because one of them is for an event, I think, in two weeks, which obviously that event is going to be canceled, so. I know one of them, like a license for Normandy Farms, I mean, they're not going to, they're kind of in a holding pattern, I think, so.
So the action before the board is for you to approve the event. It's going to be up to them whether or not they still hold it. So your action is just to approve the event from your end?
Yeah, but we also have a public safety thing to look at as we're approving these events, too.
But I think the governor's decree is going to offset most of that anyway because they don't want any gathering of more than 10 people.
And the thing is, is that they're all, I would say, you'd be wise to just say, all subject to pending, you know, removal of any particular emergency.
Well, we're in a state of emergency.
A state of emergency.
Yeah, so pending Foxborough's state of emergency.
Right.
Really?
Right.
Is there anything we can do, too, to not have to approve it again, like if the date shifts, you know, within 30 days or something?
I think.
If we don't meet again before an event, depending on how quickly things change?
I'm sure, I'm not sure I missed the, I missed the first part of that, Leo.
So like, if we approve something and they postpone the date like a month out, would we have to reapprove it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, or like, let's take softball and baseball opening day. So that's supposed to be April 11th. So what if they decide to do it the next weekend and we don't meet in there? Can we approve these and put some kind of condition in there? Is it even smart? You know, if the date changes within 30 days, it's still approved? Or will we have to come back and reapprove it? Just thinking about making it easier as dates shift and events are kind of fluid right now.
I think you'd have to take it, I'm not, I don't know. I mean, it would depend on the event itself and what other competing things may be happening and that, you know, we don't want to give carte blanche for a month and then, you know, say it was, you know, 17 things on the common and they all just arbitrarily decided to move to a specific date.
So if I could just make a suggestion here, that is that you approve the. So if I can just make a suggestion here, that is that you approve the event subject to further administrative review or consideration. So for instance, I would, if they do change the date, it's going to have to go back to all the various departments for consideration to make sure, police, fire, Public Works, to make sure that we can actually have it on those dates so that there's no conflict with anything else, or that there's no kind of a traffic or other public safety consideration that we'd have to take. So I would say, if you're okay with the event, you can approve the event, but still subject to a public safety emergency or further review if the date in fact changes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's a great idea.
Well, is there some way that I can read in the events and at the ending, you know, cover all of them with a statement about review if necessity due to the current emergency requires changes?
You could do that. You can make the statement at the very end, all of these events are approved subject to the current emergency and upon further administrative review as necessary.
Yeah, perfect. All right, so having said that and had further discussion, we're talking about the Foxborough Cares. All those in favor?
Motion to approve the public event application for Foxborough Youth Baseball and Softball Association Opening Day Parade on April 11th from 9:30 to 10:30.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve a common vitriolist license for Sushi Madness, Inc.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve a Sunday entertainment license for Better Food Foxborough LLC doing business as a citizen, or Citizen Crust.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve one-day liquor licenses for Normandy Farms on April 25th, May 2nd, June 13th, July 8th, August 12th, September 19th, and November 7th of 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just under discussion, I'm going to recuse myself from that vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Sorry, it's hard to butt in. Just can you clarify where Normandy has the liquor licenses now? You know, how this will work? Will they need one if they aren't selling out of their office?
So the liquor license that they're asking for.
Package store, right?
It's package stores. They have a package store license, but not a serving, a pouring license.
Okay, all those in favor? And one recused?
Motion to approve a charity wine permit for the Sage School on Saturday, April 4th, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Under discussion, I think we have to deny this one because we know that it can't happen.
What's the day?
April 4th.
April 4th. I think the school's not even in session right now.
Well, that and you can't have gatherings.
Clinic that day, too.
They canceled the event that day already?
The rabies clinic, I'm saying, like, our town event is canceled, so I think that.
Yeah, I don't think we could approve, I think we just have to.
Deny due to the fact that it's under a general.
And they're going to have to resubmit with a different date, and I'm sure they're going to push this out to whenever. So I don't think we should approve this. I mean, conceptually, I approve it, but, you know, from a.
But that still falls under the umbrella of the governor's.
Like, we know right now that this event cannot happen, so I don't think we should approve it. The other ones are outside of that.
Further out, yeah.
So I'm going to, under discussion, I mean, I say we have to deny it.
Okay, great.
We made a motion to approve, it was seconded, all those in favor?
All those denied?
Opposed.
Opposed, yeah. Okay, so we opposed it, and we'll send them a note that it's still under the umbrella of the governor's edict.
Right.
And change the date, but this is a good time for your.
Blanket statement?
Subject to the action of emergency status in the community as well as across the Commonwealth, the following groups may have to change dates as further evidence is gathered about the crisis we face in the community.
We don't have to vote on that.
No. It's just an overriding statement of all the approvals that have been given.
And the last one is a motion to approve Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for December 10th, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion?
Under discussion, it had me not there for roll call, but then me taking a vote in executive session. I don't remember coming in late that day. I don't know if anyone else remembers it. So I would have been absent to go into executive session, but in the executive session.
Yeah, I remember. We took the vote in here, and then you came in.
You came in after, after the fact.
When we were meeting down the hall, yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
It's about the only thing I remember, Leah.
All right, all those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I know we're going to, you're getting ready to adjourn, but I think it would be fitting to just take note of the fact today that Tom Brady announced that he's not coming back. And I think, you know, I know a lot of people are sad about that. But I think we should really celebrate what he's done for this community, for the NFL, for the Patriots organization. And I want to say, I think, from all of us, I think I speak for all of us here, we want to say thank you for all the things that he's done for this, for this community, and for everything that he's done for the NFL franchise, as well as the New England Patriots, and the six Super Bowls that he's brought to this community. Just want to say thank you.
Absolutely. I know I have two sons that don't know anything but what it's like. A good old Schaefer Stadium with the metal chairs, benches, and concrete concourses, so.
End of a very impressive era of 20 years, and a very decorated career, so thank you.
All right, one more.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Leah, it worked out pretty good.
No, you don't have a kid?
Right until I had myself muted at the end, yeah, I think it worked out great. I mean, being on this end, I was able to follow along, hear everything, vote, so it's a good test.